Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsico City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 22. Audrey, can you show that our city planners present, our city engineer? All council members are present, along with our assistant city administrator and administrator. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay. Is anyone online that would like to speak? All right, we will close the open forum and move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. But anyone like to add anything or delete at this time? Adam?
Mayor Staff would request to add item 6.1 for a temporary liquor license that was distributed at the Diaz for you this evening.
Is there any other items? All right, and a motion for our agenda to be in order?
May I have your?
That's Brittany.
The agenda has amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item three is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
May I have your?
Yes, Brittany.
I'm going to just move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 4.1 is the Drinking Water Interconnect Improvement Project. I see Scott Schaefer is online. So I will turn this over to Kurt or Scott. Hi, Scott.
Hi. All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. And I, how's the audio coming through? Okay?
You're good. It's good.
All right, thank you. All right, just a couple of slides. Date on the East-West Interconnect Booster Station. Okay, so as the drinking water distribution system sits today, it is two separate systems, the east system and the west system. One of the projects that Ron has been working on is the pipeline for the East-West Interconnect. As we've worked towards refining this, the pipeline portion ended up being in two phases. The blue dash portion in the middle there is the part that it's intended to be constructed next year. The red portion will be deferred until there's some better definition of exactly where that pipeline routing should run. As part of that, looked at making sure that the booster station was in good working order and that it had the reliability that it needed because with that, with this configuration, without getting into too much of the details, that pink area is a little bit higher and so higher elevation, that booster is necessary to actually convey the water from the lower orange area to that upper pink area in the in the lower right. So that that's the purpose of the booster station. So, next slide. So, as I mentioned, that East-West Interconnect, the Phase 1 is going to be continuing to move forward. It's about two miles of 16 inch and 12 inch pipelines. With that, a few other bits and pieces, pressure reducing valve vaults, tower fill control valves, and then those booster station upgrades. Altogether, looking at a project cost around three and a half million. Next slide. So some of the updates, this is really Ron's portion and what I whatever I miss, I'll let Ron add to it. Pipeline update is most of it laid out already. Now we're going through and doing the the right away portion and figuring out any easements that need to be obtained with the property owners. Still looking at a 2023 construction schedule for that pipeline portion. And then, next slide. The booster station, so this is part of making the entire interconnect work and moving water throughout the distribution system. It's a piece of infrastructure that's been there for quite a while, constructed originally in 2008. And its purpose is to move water from that lower elevation pressure zone to the higher elevation pressure zone. And generally, it's been used for emergency operation. There's there's historically been enough flexibility in that portion of the system that didn't have to rely on the booster station very often. And in general, it's been something that that hasn't run a whole lot, but it still does have 14 years of age on it. With the East-West Interconnect getting put into place and dealing with some of the water quality issues and just to balance the water quality between the east and the west, the booster station is a piece of that, making that work that will need to be run nearly continuously once that pipeline is in place. So the actual operation of the booster station will be changing once some of the other infrastructure is there. Next slide. So what does that all entail? So we've already completed the assessment associated with it. Basically, went and took a look at it and just visual inspection. And we haven't, we didn't tear into anything, but seeing where it's at. One of the big things that doesn't have right now is an emergency generator. And there has been power interruptions at that site over the last couple of years. So including an emergency generator is a big piece of this. Beyond that, electrical improvements, just mostly due to to age of the system. Then some security improvements, ventilation improvements, and then doing a little bit of pump and valve maintenance, just as we're in there, get everything back to the same baseline. The total project cost, including engineering, once we get into the preliminary design, hopefully we'll be able to get this number a little tighter. But right now, looking to be in the range of $425,000 to $475,000 for this portion of the interconnect. Also anticipated to be a 2023 construction with some of the electrical lead items probably a little bit later in the year than the the pipeline portion, but still anticipating this will be a 2023 build. Next slide. So what's in the packet is professional services agreement. So that will include the preliminary and final design, the bidding phase services, and then the construction services, programming and post-construction, basically the warranty period. And you know, often, at least for what AE2S has been doing with the city, they, we've been doing a few of the larger projects where we just do design and bidding initially on the professional services agreement. And then, once we've got a real good handle on exactly what that looks like, we'll come back and do the remainder of it. This one was small enough, we did it all, we scoped all of it and put it all into the initial agreement. So this $115,000 that's in front of you right now with that agreement gets us all the way through the the post-construction period. So then, that RCA that's in the packet is for this professional services agreement associated with the booster station portion of the East-West Interconnect. So that's the that's the slides.
Ron, do you have any comments?
No, he covered it.
Okay. All right, council, questions for Scott or staff?
Tom. This is something that we have looked at in public work subcommittee. Scott, could you maybe expand upon a little bit of the benefits of connecting the east-west and why we as council have been looking at connecting the east and west?
Yes, so. Multifaceted, the, some of the main benefit is that once the pieces are connected, when we look at redundancy, you know, like largest well out of service, that kind of thing, then we get to count everything together. Right now, when the west side is isolated, we have to count the largest well out on the west side. When the east side is isolated, largest well out on the east side. Once it's all together, we can move water between the two sides. Now it's just the largest well in the the overall system. So it helps us out from a capacity standpoint. The other, the other big part of that was the elevated storage volume, the basically the water towers. Water Tower 4 is one of the recent big piece of infrastructure that was to support the west side. That in the absence of doing the interconnect, we would have been looking at, we would have been on the cusp of additional elevated storage volume on the east side with the interconnect. Now, the two sides can share that elevated storage volume. Part of that is for emergency and fire flow. So a share, you're essentially sharing the infrastructure once you've been able to connect the two sides. The water quality portions, I alluded to that, it'll be that we can get. The high radium well is on the east side that we we try not to use that well because of the higher radium. And we're using that blending strategy to maintain the drinking water standards for those parameters. So we'll be able to better bring water over to the, from the west side to the east side to to help manage that water quality.
Right, any other questions or comments? Could you go back a few slides? In the beginning, it talked about how you're working on right away with the county. It was in the, yes, right away permits. And then you had the map up, which is, this is right, I mean 70th, but then once you saw the red, that was the later portion, so I'm looking at Ron on this one. And that is obviously going through people's property.
Um, 70th Street Water Main will be located in the county right away.
Okay.
There is easement that will be needed when we dig a line in eight feet deep. There are some areas that the excavation will go into people's property. So we will need that for access to it even in the future. So we need the easement for that. And then to pile the dirt alongside that, of course, we got the county road on one side, so you can't go that direction. So you have to push the dirt and pile it on on the south side. Because this is all going on the south side of the road.
Okay, so I was gonna ask which.
Between the water tower number four and where Boulder Creek, Pageant Avenue comes out, meets with the CASA 38. We already have that water line underneath 38, so we'll connect at that point. We had that put in when Boulder Creek and when CASA 38 were, was reconstructed. So we'll make those connections. As Scott said, it's a 16 inch and a 12 inch. And we've worked with AE2S on determining what locations need to be a 16 and what locations need to be a 12. So, yeah, we're sent over the plans to Wright County in a draft form just to get their approval before we actually go forward with the right away permit. We want to make sure that everything that we have is in the right location for them before submitting for a right away permit.
Tom?
Madam Mayor, I guess to the mayor's question, it's the blue line that we're talking about.
Correct.
Now, not the red line. And the blue line as far as right away that we currently have on north and south side, where the county has on the north and south side. The reason why we're going on the south side versus the north side is.
Yeah, there's two reasons. One, the trails on the north side. And the second one is that all utilities are on the north side in a joint trench. So the south side is more open for us to be placing our water main. And we're looking at the areas that we directional bore or open cut. Open cut is a little less expensive. Of course, we have more easements to potentially buy. So we are also considering, well, you know, once they have that, those pieces of equipment out there, putting an alternate bid for all directional bore versus some open cut. Because you, it, it may be to a point that the contractor that's doing the directional bore would say, I can do the whole thing for cheaper than bringing in a sub to do some open cutting. So I want to be able to have that option for the city to consider.
Are we ensuring that we're gaining enough right away here in order to put in sewer in the future as well? Or?
Sewer will come through the developments. There's a lift station that's near that booster station star somewhere down there. And that will facilitate everything between 70th Street and south to the the city line, all the way over to pretty close to McAllister, which is near Water Tower number four. So that whole area will slowly build across as developers come in after that lift station is approved to be constructed.
And so to my point, once connecting this blue line, we're actually connecting the east and west water, we will have enough right away there in order to have a sewer line.
The sewer line will be south, it'll be probably halfway in between 70th and 60th and be built. The trunk will be built with the development. And we collect our SAC fees and then give them credits for that portion of the pipe. It's either oversized or extra depth in order to get across there.
No, the 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 main part of my question is to make sure that we're not going to have to come along 70th Street in the future.
No, we will not.
Right away, because, you know.
Yeah, that that would not be the plan.
Mayor, there is no sewer in the 70th Street right away. It will be within local streets as developed.
Yeah, the watersheds. 70th Street's kind of the breakpoint. Everything that's north of it typically goes north. Everything that's south of it typically goes south. So it ended up being a division point between lift station watersheds.
Yep.
Then my next comment would be that I know Phase 2 is in the red. But you have some ditches that are very steep on that south side, even along 70th. And so the blue section, and you mentioned that some had to be the different sized pipes and would potentially be wider right of ways going into residents' properties. Is that because of how deep it is from the road, basically, how you're actually boring it?
Well, that, Water Main is usually, it's always
Very deep.
Eight feet deep.
Okay.
It's the sewer is the one that can change quite a bit because it's gravity, that water's under pressure system.
Okay.
That portion of the system is actually a high pressure line going through a low pressure area. So that's why it's in Phase 2. And we don't have any property or right away at this time to go through there. We don't know where the streets are going to be located. So those are the main reasons why we're holding off. Getting this portion Phase 1 does allow us to move water from west to east, which is, as we found out, the more important direction. Because we, as Scott said, the radium well is on the east side. So we want to use the wells that are on the west side to supply the east side. We don't use that radium well that often to keep the the radium levels within drinking standards. So this just allows us the ability until we have water quality put into our, to remove the radium. Put in, you know, we can feed water to the east that's got, you know, doesn't have that extra radium in it.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Jeff.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement. East-West Interconnect Booster Station number one improvements with AE2S in the amount of 115,000.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? Tom?
Madam Mayor, as the city attorney reviewed the agreement.
Mayor Council have reviewed the agreement.
And everything that's, we've looked at is in order?
Yes, we made some revisions and modifications and the current agreement is accepted.
Madam Mayor, just one other follow-up question. Adam, this is again coming out of the Water Utility 601 budget.
That's correct, and it's budgeted in 2023.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, moving on to item 5.1. This is under City Council Reports and Updates. This is our commission, these are the updates. Heritage Preservation is Brittany.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be going to quarterly meetings after the month of September. Please, you know, if anyone wants to join OHPC, we'd love to have you. Otherwise, that's it.
Perfect, still meeting on the same night, just doing a quarterly.
Correct.
All right, next is Park and Rec Commission, which was me. We actually had an off-site park meeting, which at school, no, it's one of our oldest parks in the city. So we had a neighborhood engagement meeting. We did have some residents come, look at the condition of the tennis courts, the basketball courts. We got a lot of good feedback from residents on what they'd like to see in the park, what they'd like to keep in the park. And now it's kind of back in the hands of the Park Commission and staff to put it together. One of our, you know, I'll say, one of my questions was finding out the grade of the equipment. I know that there are, there's requirements by the state of what, and even our insurance company of what the, how safe our equipment is. But, you know, some of them look like they're in really good condition still. So following up with that would be, what's the grade of these pieces of equipment? And not just getting rid of it because it met the deadline of of a calendar year versus. But there are, there are some major concerns with the courts over there. We have tried to fix them multiple times. And and the residents, it was, you know, the the ones that showed up were very interested in being able to continue to keep the basketball courts there. I don't think tennis got a ton of cheerleading for it, but still even keeping one, that was always in the plan. So staff did a great job and also mailers were put out. They did the social pinpoint. So overall, I would have hoped more people would have attended, but hopefully, hopefully they went online and gave their input. Next is Planning Commission. Tom?
I'll let Dan interject at any point in time. But there was a concept of rule up here for the apartment complex building that has people. Transportation setting right now.
Yep.
And then over here, this area, this area, they're looking at an industrial and asking to change from commercial to an industrial type warehouse type use. And that was.
Table.
So, well, number 10 was approved. Mayor, there's also a building, commercial office warehouse building approved for the location south where Vocal Point Commercial is, that will come to the council on your meeting likely September.
On Ron Tuches' property.
Further south. Great time.
Yeah, there you go. And then also Wright County wants to expand their satellite station on the west side of the city west of County Road 19, north of 70th Street. I don't know if Councilmember Dirk wants to play at that one, too. Wright County. Yeah. Thank you. That was also approved. It will be. That'll be at your meeting on September 12th as well.
Perfect. All right, Public Safety, Tina.
Public Safety meeting was moved from the ninth Tuesday. We normally have our meetings on Tuesdays because of primaries. So it was the Wednesday, the 10th. A lot of conversation regards to Queens Avenue. I mean, I'm sure Jason can touch on this, too. But with the engine braking, the trucks coming from Blue Dot, I can't remember the other one there. But just having some issues with that. So I got on the horn with Kevin. And he actually put out a temporary sign on both ends of Queens. And then he got approval from Adam to order some signage, which I don't know, I didn't hear from him if they're up yet or not.
And that was how, that they also talked at Public Works Subcommittee.
And Madam Mayor, just to add on that, we did touch on that at Public Works Subcommittee. It's going to put up four signs on both sides.
Yep.
Double sided is what I asked for. So that's what he was going to do and put on each side of Queens, each end, I should say.
Yep.
No engine braking. So that was pretty awesome. He responded very quickly with that. So, and I updated Jason on that as well, too. That was kind of our biggest talk for the evening. We did talk a little bit about the Alina ambulance. It's supposed to be at Elmerville Fire Hall and it's not. So the response time is coming from Buffalo. It's 20, it can be 25 minutes, and it was 25 minutes for one of the episodes that went on. So the IRV actually got to the location first. And then finally, a lineup ambulance came, but 25 minutes, which is unacceptable.
So they're saying why?
So.
Like doing?
Well, I think because, and again, Jason can comment, but staff there, they don't have enough people to to staff the trucks is what they're saying.
And so for clarification for other people, the IRV got there into an area that they don't usually cover. Correct, Tina? So the IRV was coming out of Elk River.
If this was, yeah, the same.
Incident that.
Incident, yes, yeah.
So the IRV would have not been in that territory, would have been in the Alina territories.
Right. But we couldn't wait that long.
No, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just letting everyone know up here.
Yes.
Kind of what that means exactly.
Um, so yes, that is unacceptable. And along with kind of the engine braking, Jason has had talks with Blue Dot for training of their staff. It's, they have a safety coalition that they're putting on, which is great. Let's see, what else? I think that was. Oh, one other notation here that you mean is, we were talking, Dan had brought up, we were just chatting about, again, ambulances and such. And learned that with, if there's a lift assist, Centricare does charge for that. And that would be somebody that wants to be, you know, lifted but not sent to the hospital. So if somebody falls, they just wanted to be, like I said, lifted. So they call it a lift assist. And it's just something to note that Centricare does charge for that.
Does that just be picked off the ground or?
Yeah, if somebody falls and they don't want to go to the hospital to get checked or whatnot, then you charge for that.
And the other services, ambulance providers don't charge for that? That's just something that's provided?
That's, I'm not sure, because we were talking about Centricare. I don't know if Alina charges or not, or who has that. I don't know, I don't want to say. I don't, okay, sure. That's something that I would have to get clarification on, if Alina or any of the other, well, we have just Alina and Centricare.
And Elk River.
Yeah. And I don't know if they do or not. Jason can be able to comment on that. But the biggest conversation that night was honestly the.
Engine braking.
Yeah, engine braking signs.
And that's been going on for years.
Exactly, it has been.
Yeah.
So I told these guys, I said, we'll get on it, we'll get some signs out there. So Jason, you can comment to see if there's, the actual signs are out there. So, but that was it.
Thank you. All right, we saw under City Council Reports, does anyone have anything? All right, moving on to staff reports and updates. We had added item 6.1, which is the temporary liquor license. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor. We received a request from Cornerstone Women's Center. They're requesting a temporary liquor license for their fundraisers coming up on September 24. And due to the state needing it within 30 days for their review, we're asking that you approve the request tonight. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Jeff.
We make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on sale liquor license to the Cornerstone Women's Center.
Doing businesses.
Okay, uh. Doing, doing business at options for women's cornerstone for a fundraiser to be held on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, four P M to nine P M. At the La Favor Family Farm ninety-two forty-four Parish Avenue Northeast, subject to the following stipulations, I read all those.
We're just getting it right now.
Options to women cornerstone personnel will be responsible for verifying persons being served alcohol, have. Have required verification of legal age, all alcohol service shall close or shall cease at nine P M. Issuance of temporary liquor license shall be subject to approval, special event permit in accordance with the city code.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Tina, is there any discussion? Tom.
Mayor, when's the last time we've done a special liquor license?
Uh, Prairie Festival.
Great, but, uh, I mean, I, I guess other than.
I don't know that you've issued any since I've been here. Can you think of any, Darren?
Mayor, no, because other special events typically have a caterer. Uh, that has their own liquor license, because the limitations are pretty specific as to who can get the temporary liquor license, so. The only one that we've ever had previously was the Seagull Lions for the Prairie Festival.
When you looked at this, just look. Everything was good.
Correct, and they did also submit their application for the special event permit last Thursday, so we have that under review and that'll be at your meeting on September twelfth.
Okay. Alright, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, we're still under staff reports and updates, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just a quick update, uh, our mechanic position did close last Thursday, we received four applicants. Um, so we're in the process of reviewing those, um, and bringing some people in for interviews, hopefully, um, that's all I have.
Adam.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, as a reminder, there's a special meeting tomorrow evening at five P M for the city council to interview the finalists. Uh, for the parking rec director, uh, position with the city. Um, and then. One additional reminder, there's a budget meeting next Monday at five thirty. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, Adra.
Thank you, Mayor, just to let everybody know, the primary election, we had one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight voters that turned out. Um, and in addition, the photo contest closes on Wednesday, September seventh, so please submit your photos if you have any.
Great, thank you. Dave.
Nothing to report this week, thanks, Mayor.
Alright, Dan.
Mayor, the next planning commission meeting will be on Tuesday, September sixth, we did receive the development stage application from. Due North Car Wash and the planning commission will also be discussing the conference of plans.
Mayor, I'm, uh, do that to your. People that covered.
Yes.
That would be out of town.
Yep. Ron.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, we'll be opening bids for well number ten on August thirtieth, and they'll be at the next council for your review and possible approval.
Alright. Jason.
I was listening to the radio now, I'm just, discombobulated, so. I'll go into a couple of things that Tina had brought up, um, as far as the lift assists, uh, lift assists go, um, essentially what we're talking about is. Members of the public will, on occasion. Uh, either have a medical emergency or simply they'll fall. Uh, loved one or a family member, wife, husband, et cetera, can't pick them up for whatever reason. Um, they'll typically call nine-one-one for assistance, especially if it's three o'clock in the morning, midnight, whatever the case is, you know, it's not super convenient to have. Maybe family members respond in the middle of the night to their house, especially if they're coming from. Coon Rapids, wherever, um, so they will call and I have encouraged that with, um. Members of the public, if they feel like they're in a magic, medical situation where they have no one else to contact, I don't want them laying on the floor for hours on end. Trying to arrange that, so our deputies do respond to those, um. The, the discussion of public safety was. Kind of the cliche that sometimes you hear is the, as the population gets older, that those concerns and the numbers of times that does happen seem to increase. Um, I would say that the number has increased a bit. But, I mean, we could certainly just attribute it, population goes up, we're gonna have those type of calls. Um, we, we just had some of the discussion, who's, who's responsibility is it, so to speak, and, uh, you know, is it an ambulance? Because it's a medical problem, is it a law enforcement, is it, you know, a fire department, et cetera, and so there's a lot of agencies. Um, across the metro that are all, all having that debate of just trying to. Look at how you prioritize that type of caller, who you send, um, again, I've, I've had the discussion with my dispatchers that. If, if somebody calls and we're available, we're gonna go, um, that's, that's not fair to a member of the public to have to. Feel responsible for trying to lay something out when I have a squad car that's available, if they're available, we're gonna go pick them up, or we're gonna make sure that they're okay. Um, some of the changes in that are, a lot of the times, the dispatchers do have a procedure that technically it's coded as medical, so technically we need to start a ambulance. Well, so the, the, the central care part of it was. If my deputy is tied up on another call and central care ambulance shows up, central care charges for that service. Um, and they will, central care have made, I think, a change during COVID where they typically, if. If central care ambulance or EMS arrives on scene, they will typically have some sort of charge or something. For just about any sort of call, even if they're not transported to the hospital. So we're trying to, you know, make sure we're not having a financial burden on any, any member of the public, simply because they. Slipped, or maybe they had a moment where they just collapsed and felt, whatever the case is.
I guess that's why I asked the question, I'm like. Are there, are you then turning people away from calling because they're scared that they're gonna have to be charged to?
Right, so, and, and again, it kind of falls into that. I don't want that, I don't want somebody. At whatever time, but we, we have a lot of residents that are in their homes by themselves.
Mm-hmm.
I do not feel comfortable with them sitting, trying to prioritize who to be calling and worrying about that, so that's why I say. My deputies will respond to that and they will help in whatever capacity, if it's a case, if we just need to lift somebody up, great. If we need to get ambulance involved, we can call an ambulance and we can figure it out from there, so. I guess that is just, it's, it's, it's interesting because it's.
Yeah.
You know, we, like I said. And as you pointed out, you know, we don't want people to stray away from calling because they're worried about crap, I don't want to, I can't afford this bill to get lifted up. So I know there's a lot of departments, um, you know, they have. Monocello, Monocello Fire Department has a, uh. Essentially a duty officer that's on call at twenty-four seven and he responds to help out with lift assist at any point, um, so. But every city's a little bit different. As far as Queen at Queens Avenue goes, um. There was some discussion about that, there's obviously just a lot of semi truck traffic, I brought it up, uh. In front of this podium here too, that we get a lot of that, we have a lot of complaints from both the south end of, uh, Queens Avenue and industrial area and the north side. Because both sides, they have to go down a hill, so it's just kind of a perfect storm for them, so, um, they just want to try to alleviate some of the noise concerns with the increase of traffic. Um, construction traffic, et cetera, um, so there has been some discussion that I've, I've met with, I can, I don't say I spoke with Blue Dot and they're trying to, you know. Be. Kind of proactive and trying to solve some of the problems and they want to have a, um, a safety team for. Um, helping out with their own medical emergencies and et cetera, so, or, you know, I had brought up, you know, while I was at that meeting, I just brought up, uh, engine braking. Kevin had put out the big electronic board flashing no engine braking, so I got a good laugh out of that, I guess, I was like, that's.
Yeah.
Like, perfect, that'll, that'll get everybody's attention, so, um, it also kind of fell on the. Government efficiency at its finest, where the ordinance was in place, or the county attorney's office doesn't want us enforcing it unless there's specific signage that is placed. Essentially right there.
Right.
So it's, it's nice to have the double-sided. Clear, you cannot engine brake, exhaust brake at this location, so that'll be nice to have it like it. No excuse, essentially, so, um, with, with the ordinances listed literally at, at the, the location of the problem. Uh, and then the only, only thing that I had on my list was, uh. We're getting close to school year here, it's kind of a. Now, we're gonna unprecedented time for us, because now we're gonna have four schools in town, there's a lot of students, it's a lot. Lot of traffic, uh, around the school, so I'm gonna make sure that, uh, the deputies are out there. Um, trying to be really proactive with trying to see what kind of problems we're gonna be having, um, I re, I really don't know what to expect up on MacGyver, uh, this year. Um, trying to, trying to look at how the traffic flows in and out, but I. We don't know until it happens, because the human behavior, people try to problem solve as the, the lines get stacked up, et cetera, so. We'll see what that looks like and see if we can just problem solve it, and we're trying to be proactive with making sure everyone's behaving themselves out there too, so, uh, there was a deputy. Uh, that was sitting out there yesterday, just trying to watch traffic flow and it was noticing, it's like, you know, you have. All the, the, the parks and the school over here. We want to make sure everyone's behaving themselves even before it starts, well, there's some motorcycle that was doing wheelies at eighty-five miles an hour down MacGyver Avenue and the deputy tried to pull it over and the guy just waved at him and took off. So, we don't want that.
Wow. No, we don't have that.
So, that's what I have on my list.
And to the, to the school entrance and times. Dan, that was talked about specifically with a lot of the residents over there, because they are changing the way people can enter Prairie View Elementary.
Correct, and we've been having discussions with the school district because of the ongoing construction with Prairie Point as well, so.
Right.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot to take into consideration, there's a lot of residents on eightieth that have had some concerns about speed. Last decade period.
Right.
Um, uh, not even considering that there's two schools that have gone in since, so they've, they've definitely showed their concern and we tried to make that, uh. Make that a priority location, but yeah, I just, I'm not sure what, uh, expect, I know, I've seen some of the plans of, this was kind of the concept of what we'd like everybody to do and how the times are staggered, but.
Right.
I said that. In theory.
You know, and I've. I think we can all agree too, we saw that uptick in parents dropping off their kids, not using the buses, so more parent drop offs, and that was like. And when those schools were built, it wasn't even the plan, I mean, same with that sequel elementary, it's just, so. You know, you've got other people that are, you know, stacking up on forty-two and you've dealt with, you know, me calling you a bazillion times, saying that people are speeding around that corner, so. Who knows with the school year role bearing, maybe more people will be on the buses, less parent drop offs, who knows?
Agree.
Guess we'll see what it, what happens.
Might be good, uh, for coming to get that sign out there before the corner, people.
On forty-two?
Yeah, forty-two, just, uh, before. Um, school opens and people are gonna be whipping around there.
It is a county road.
Right, yeah.
Right.
It's county road.
Yeah.
But we'd have to work with the county.
We'd have to work with the county on that, it, I mean, that is a huge concern, as people are coming south out of forty, you know, forty-two, as they. Turn that corner and then everybody's parked, I mean, it's just their.
Yeah.
The last second pulling over, and I know the school says, no left turns when you're leaving, you're supposed to take a right, but you still see people.
Oh, yeah, and all it takes is one, you know, and that stacks everything up, so it.
Mm-hmm.
Hasn't been an accident already at drop off.
Yeah.
Because of how much stacking there is and you can't see.
Yeah, it's a. There's a lot of people that forget that there's a school there when they're making that southbound curve and they're.
Right.
Ex, you know, already thinking they're accelerating onto one oh one and they're coming around that corner at Mach ten.
Right. Well, hopefully, so will staff reach out to the county about getting a signage. Got open houses coming up, so maybe even getting it out before those open houses, just so it kind of alerts the parents. About additional traffic. And I'm sure. And I'm sure your deputies, as you said, will be. Out by all four schools.
Yes.
Anything else?
It's got on my list.
Anything else for Jason? Alright, thank you.
Good job, thank you, Serge.
Great, does anyone else have anything? And a motion to adjourn would be in order, second motion by Tom, seconded by Tina, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended, thank you all for attending.
No, but I got.